The first item of business is approval of September 27th, regular commission meeting minutes.
Another mayor, commissioners, I found no additions or deletions on the minutes, and I make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the regular commission meeting minutes for the meeting of September 27th, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on resolution 2016-36, a resolution approving fixed asset changes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I've provided you with a copy of a resolution, and we can go through it since you haven't had an opportunity to review it prior to the meeting. This resolution is requesting that the commission approve fixed asset changes. As you know, we do conduct an annual physical inventory every year. We use a company called RCI, Records Consultants Incorporated, and they actually perform our physical inventory. When that inventory is completed, they then send us a listing of items that they couldn't find or weren't scanned, and then I have to meet with the individual departments. The majority of the items are police and fire because they have the majority of the assets that we own. We do have 1,615 inventory items in our database. That was last year's figure. But, so anyway, once we kind of reconcile all of this, I did report to you last year that we had a large amount of computer equipment, monitors, printers, stuff that's just piled up over the last few years that we've kind of isolated, and I think we are now ready to probably properly dispose of those items, probably through our recycling department. They do take e-waste, so that's something we would like to coordinate with Jason Phillips and his department. So you'll see the majority of the items on this list that we would like to delete from our fixed asset inventory are mostly computers, printers, a couple VCRs. I think there might be an older TV on here. The library also has some items, computers, microfilm readers, and things of that nature. So you can kind of go down the list, and if you have any specific questions on any of the items, I can answer those questions. But I do want to point out, under the additions, and we did have this discussion with the mayor earlier today, every year when we do the reconciliation, we have to make sure that our beginning balance, our ending balance from last year in our fixed assets is our beginning balance as of July 1. If it's not, then that means that there was some additions made to our fixed asset listing that we need to account for. So you're going to see there is a large piece of equipment. It's a Gemini Extreme next-gen baler that's at our recycle center. And for whatever reason, when it was purchased in 2012, that was probably right before, right around the time that we started working with RCI to create our database, this particular piece of equipment was not added to the inventory. So when they were here in April, they did issue it a tag number, and it is currently in our database. And so that would be a change to our beginning cash balances as of July 1, which we would need to let the auditors know what the change is and the amount. So that is the only addition on this request. Other than that, everything else reconciled to our ending balance of last year. And then I did put a statement at the very end of this request because once we're done, Leonard Zamora with our buildings department has started with some of the equipment upstairs, but has not finished the library equipment. We must certify that any hard drives of equipment that we're disposing of have been destroyed. And so the method he's using is using a drill, and he's drilling them. So I have an entire box upstairs of just hard drives that have been drilled. So once him and I complete that process, him and I will execute the certification that every piece of equipment on this listing has been properly destroyed prior to it going to the recycling center. So most of the items on here are all under $5,000, so they don't really affect our capital assets that are capitalized. However, I did attach a list of Jim Matthews' report on the items that were not scanned, but him and I went back and determined that they are still in service with the exception of he has two defibrillators and a portable pump that are out of service and are to be retired. So those changes would also be part of your approval this evening. So is there any questions?
I didn't get a copy.
Oh.
That's not a question.
Sorry. Brain.
Are there any more questions? I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2016-36, a resolution approving fixed asset changes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2016-36, a resolution approving fixed asset changes. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Can I go ahead?
Mayor and Commissioner, on the next item, I do not have that one available to present to you for approval this evening. As I mentioned, in past years, I will give you an actual report that shows our beginning and ending balances of our fixed assets. It also summarizes the additions, deletions, changes that we had throughout the fiscal year. I do have it almost complete, but I am working with Records Consultants, Inc. There's still a few glitches with our system, and part of it is last year I did have them reprogram our system to customize our reports the way that our auditors would like them, and that's so that I can extract data and reports that are by item class. And so we have about 12 or 13 different item classes. And so when I ran all of these item class reports individually, those reports don't tie back to this report. So those are some of the things that I'm working with them right now because I have to be 100% sure before I give anything to the auditors that our capitalization reports, our depreciation reports, these item reports, everything has to match and reconcile back to this inventory summary. And so it has been kind of a chore from year to year. It's getting a little bit easier, but there's some things that I have the capability to correct in the system, but some of it's more on the back end, and only they can make some of those corrections to get these reports to run properly. So I will have that prepared for you by the next meeting.
Okay. We need a motion to postpone item C until the next meeting.
I will move to postpone item C. Action on resolution 2016-37, authorization of certification of the city's 2016 capital asset inventory.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to postpone the authorization, to postpone resolution 2016-37, authorizing the certification of the city of Raton 2016 capital asset inventory. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Deliberate an act on lodgers tax recommendations for contract with Lamar billboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'd like to give you a little brief history about what Lamar's done for the city of Raton. This is my fifth year working with the lodgers tax board on billboard advertisements. For the past, I would say, four years prior to this year, the lodgers tax has had seven billboards with Lamar. We did a little bit of a change-up this year. Those seven billboards have been, were in Las Vegas, Clayton, and Raton. All of those billboards that you have posted on in the past, you are still advertising on to this day, even though some of them are out of contract. We normally keep up advertisers if the vinyl still looks fresh, and it's still providing a good service. Now, as of this year, when meeting with the lodgers tax, they had mentioned that they wanted to do things a little bit different. They wanted to look at some other areas in addition to just Las Vegas, Clayton, and Raton. So this year, they had recommended that I find them a location in Amarillo, one in Roswell, one in Tucumcari, and keeping a little bit, two panels in Las Vegas and a couple here in Raton. The smaller panels that are leading into the town from both the south and the north. Now, also in addition to just the regular two-year contracts that I've done with you guys, we have changed out the vinyl a few times, the message dependent on what was recommended by the lodgers tax and the design that they wanted to go for, the Explore Raton, et cetera. I've also worked with Gate City Music Festival. I worked with Mammoth Man Race, is that correct? Mountain Man, I'm sorry. With the rodeo, I've done some Explore Raton banners, and I've also bonused a few vinyls to special events through the recommendation and just because I've appreciated your guys' business for so many years. I wanted to help out in providing just some extra added special event stuff. In addition to that as well, this year, earlier in the year, Lamar had installed a brand-new digital billboard in Albuquerque at the interstate of I-40 and I-25. When we started, when that billboard went live in, I believe it was February, we had a few extra spaces. I was asked by my managers if I had some clients that I thought should receive some free space, and the city of Raton was one of them. So I bonused you guys a week of digital worth $1,400 on that, and it was basically a backdrop of the beautiful scenery and ExploreRaton.com. So just a little history on expenses or what's been spent on outdoor. The first year, when we had those seven panels in Las Vegas, in Clayton and Raton, it was a two-year contract. That contract was $44,821 for two years, average of $22,410 per year. That was for 2012 and '13. In 2014 and 2015, the billboards were $50,258 for a two-year contract, each year averaging $25,125. The contract for 2016 and '17 is a flat $50,000, $25,000 per year. What's changed on this contract was instead of seven billboards, it's six. The cost of the Amarillo, the Tucumcari, and the Roswell board was approximately, one of them a couple hundred more, one of them 75 more, just different markets, different prices. So what you have in front of you are the locations that were selected by the lodgers tax. Also, at the end of that is the contract for the flat $50,000, and then an additional contract for six vinyls. Now, obviously, with new boards being acquired, they're going to need a new advertisement on them, and all of the other ones need a freshening up. They're looking a little weathered. So that's the cost of six vinyls, one for this year and one for next year. And that is new to this two-year contract because in the past, after two years, they looked pretty weathered, and the lodgers tax had mentioned that they were concerned that by the end of two years, it was looking pretty tattered. So I went ahead and bonused you two vinyls and charged you a discounted rate for the other five. That was a lot of info. How did I do, Scott? This is my first meeting.
Well, we discussed this a couple of meetings ago, and I think that really clarifies a lot of discussion we had because we had no one at, none of us had been to the lodgers tax board meeting, and Tricia was gone during that meeting. And thank you for coming up tonight.
Oh, of course, and I apologize I missed the last one.
We know that there's been some, you know, some things going on. But, no, I appreciate you coming up. And I don't know if the commission has any questions there, but that really clarifies what we're doing.
Good, good. And I really appreciate you guys. You're a great, great customer. Lamar is fortunate enough to work with a lot of different cities. You're my biggest city that I work with, and I thank you for that. And that's why I try to come up here and do everything I can to make sure that everything looks good and that you're getting the best bang for the buck. And I'm also extending, if you have any more special events coming up, I'd love to help out in any way I can, and I'll continue to do that. Just give me a shout, and I'll get you guys some space. Okay?
Am I correct by saying that the total will be $56,200?
Yes. One contract specifically space, and the other one's just vinyl. And the cost of the vinyl, we will design all-new layout for you guys as well as get it installed and guarantee it for a year. So you'll no longer have, if you see anything wrong with them, you give me a shout because they're going to be under warranty, and I'll take care of them.
Is this the, I can't, I'm having trouble kind of seeing exactly what the Tabernacle Baptist Church?
Oh, that one is in Roswell. It is north of town on the main street, south of Walmart, the mall, and it's right by all the new hotels and like Tijuana's. I don't know how familiar you guys are with Roswell, but it's definitely on the main drag leaving town, right over there by Walmart and Sam's Club. And I don't know if you know, but Walmart and Sam's Club are very busy in Roswell.
What exactly is it saying here?
Oh, that is, you guys, that's what's on there right now. Your advertisement will go on there soon.
Oh, I see.
Yes, yes. This is just a sample of...
That's just where it is.
That's where it is, yes.
That makes a lot more sense to me.
And I was, and I did meet with Lee earlier today, and he had mentioned that the advertisement north of town with the cute little guy on it?
Right.
That's the style, that's the route they would like to go. So I'll work with them, and we'll get some stuff put together for you guys. We're the one that finalized this graphic. Jared, Jared Chatterley?
Yes.
An acquaintance of his designed it, and we just, we took that design and adjusted it with higher resolution, and that's the route that we're going to go on the next ones. If that's good.
Yep, it's a nice design.
Now, mayor and commissioner, I do have a question here, and it's for Michael Ann, and it's regarding the budget. We had budgeted $25,000 in the current fiscal year, so we would be looking at a budget adjustment to cover the vinyls.
Yeah, Tricia and I discussed this. I figured it'd be best to let, when they give their presentation tonight, go over the figures, and then based on what you approved, then I would bring a budget adjustment back to you at the next meeting.
Yes. Will you charge us the $3,000, about $3,100 for one year, and then again on the second year?
Yes, on the second.
So it's not six, two?
So basically, we're looking at $28,100 per year.
Did I answer everybody's questions?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Clearer than it was last time.
Good, good. Thank you for waiting for me.
We appreciate your efforts.
And that's why I made certain that the other billboards that you've had for all these years had not been covered up with something else. I knew that it was, this was a delay on my part to get up here. So I really thank you guys very much. You've been great to work with.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So...
Do we need a motion to accept?
All right. We were debating as to what action was previously taken, and I'd have to go back in the minutes and look at that. I'm not clear, but it seemed like there were some questions the last time, and there may have been action. I didn't remember that, but...
There was action taken, and it was approval for the previous $8,000 for the vinyl, vinyl only. But there was some misunderstanding with all of that with Lee and everybody.
And the vinyl decreased because it went from seven billboards to six. So that's why it's $3,100.
So we would have to rescind.
You've got to rescind that motion. Whoever made the motion, do you know who made the motion?
I can't tell you.
Has it been a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
Let me just stick here. It would have been Mr. Giacomo, and then seconded by Chavis.
Do you need a motion to rescind?
Rescind your motion that you made, not many months ago.
Make a motion to rescind my motion that was made prior evening ago.
The second is?
Okay, we have a motion to rescind the motion. When was it made?
Do you have a date on that?
I do, September 13th.
On September 13th, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. That one's dead. We have a new one.
I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation and the contract with Lamar Billboards as presented this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lodgers tax recommendation for the contract with Lamar Billboards as presented at this meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Renee.
Deliberate an act on an event, Calvary Baptist Church hayride.
Mayor and Commissioner, Calvary Baptist Church has proposed a Halloween event slated for October 26. This is an evening event. They are anticipating from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., consisting of hayride. Some of the details are attached. You also see their certificate of insurance is attached. And what they propose is they would leave the church parking lot that's located on Brilliant, Brilliant to Tiger Drive, Fourth Street to Molten, back on Fifth Street, Tiger Drive to State, and back around to the parking lot. There will be four trailers. Each vehicle will have emergency-type lights, and they will request a sheriff's escort during the entire course of the route. So I'm not sure the outcome of the sheriff's escort. We have had this reviewed by city police department and city fire. They both make notes on the form that the crews on duty will monitor and be available during the event. So our recommendation is to approve the event as submitted.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event for Calvary Baptist Church hayride. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on approval of conveyance contract by and between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding railroad depot premises. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this agenda item goes back a couple of years when there was a request from the city of Raton to Burlington Northern Santa Fe to donate the depot to the city of Raton. It took a while for BNSF to consider that request. Ultimately, they did convey to us that they would donate the depot to the city of Raton. And if you remember back in the spring, there was a conveyance contract that came to the commission. We considered that, and there were some questions, I believe. And there have been a couple of revisions made to the conveyance contracts and clarification on some of the terms. BNSF has made those revisions and sent the conveyance contract back to the city commission along with a lease agreement. The general terms of the conveyance contract are as follows. The railroad, BNSF, would convey the property consisting of the building and some acreage to the city of Raton at no cost to you. There, of course, it's a lengthy contract, and they would like to continue to use the building as they use it, and they use it for two purposes. There are two departments of Burlington Northern in the building. One is the Signal Department, and the Signal Department occupies the south wing of the building. Also, the telecommunications department utilizes the building, and they have some equipment consisting of servers located in part of the lobby. So one of the questions that we had back then was how much of the lobby would be available to the city of Raton for our use? And there was a meeting at some point during the summer with both Signal Department and telecommunications department, and they have given their answer in this document. And basically, the majority of the lobby would be opened up and available to the city of Raton under this agreement, but there is a small room in the lobby area that they would continue to occupy for their servers, for the telecommunications equipment. So that's indicated on the updated drawings. And you have an updated floor plan, and that telecommunications area is shown in red, as well as the south wing of the building occupied by the Signal Department is also shown in red. So they proposed that in the lease agreement that we'll talk about next, that the city would lease those areas of the building back to BNSF, and there really would not be money changing hands for that. They would pay you a one-time token of $100 for that. But in consideration of them donating the building to Raton, they would continue to use those areas. Now, this is not reflected in the agreement, but BNSF has told us verbally that they would intend to move both the Signal Department and the telecommunications at some point in the future, and that's probably no sooner than a couple of years from now. But they would look at constructing a new facility. It's essential that they maintain the signal functions in Raton, and they maintain the telecommunications functions in Raton, and they would look at another facility. But that's not stated here. There's not really guaranteed, and that would be sometime down the road in the future. So in the conveyance agreement, you do see some terms that we talked about last time, and as I remember those, you would accept the building as is. And so we have done some due diligence on the building in the meantime, and one of the things they mentioned specifically in here is that any asbestos-containing material in the building would be the responsibility of the city of Raton if that came up in the future as an abatement item. What we've done there is we have hired a consultant to look at some of the dilapidated buildings that we are working on for demolition, not related to the depot, but outside of that in town. And while the consultant was in town looking at some of these buildings, we also went through the depot. And we didn't sample and test any of the material, but what we got from that inspection is that it does not appear that there is any asbestos-containing material in the depot, and the one suspect material might be a putty that's in place in some of the windows, some of the really old windows. We wouldn't know until we sampled and tested that putty. But that's in the south wing, and it's not anticipated that we would replace those windows. And it's hard to tell by looking at that whether that's an ACM or not. The bottom line is we don't believe there's an asbestos problem with the structure. Looking at the structure, it looks structurally sound. There, of course, is some older wiring, plumbing, mechanical systems. The heating is actually fairly new. The railroad has re-roofed the building within the last couple of years. So the building's in good shape, and some of it has been kept up pretty well by the railroad. But if we're looking at renovation down the road, it probably consists of wiring upgrades, ceilings, walls, and floors, interior renovations, those kind of things. So any of that work, if it was done by the city of Raton, would require us to make contact with the state historic preservation office. And of course, they would have very large interest in maintaining the historic character of the building. So if we undertake renovation... So if we undertake renovation, that's going to be a process to communicate that to the state historic preservation office. There is some funding that remains from the multimodal project. It is funding that comes to us through the federal highway administration, through the Mexico Department of Transportation. In talking to federal highways, they said they would be agreeable to those funds going towards the depot renovation. But likely because of the SHIP-O requirement, and because of the fact that federal highway would like to close those grants out, we would probably look at things that would be easy for the SHIP-O to accept, like parking improvements, drainage improvements. And we would probably have a preliminary engineering report prepared on the building to quantify what those renovation may consist of and what the cost would be, scope of work and the cost. So that's something that I'll come back to the commission if we proceed along and put together some details for you to consider at a later date. I'll hold up there and answer any questions that you may have on the conveyance agreement or try to provide information.
As you recall, in the voice opposition on the first inspection of the building, when they had indicated that they were going to give us only the current waiting room. And I was opposed to getting just that. I had stated my opinion that by largest, that part that is in the drawing and on the preliminary drawing and the second drawing that we have addresses that. The other thing is that in the contract, they had indicated if we do any renovation at the cost, sometime in the future, if they want it back, they can get it, they can come and take it back. Well, I took some exception at that because I said, we put all this money into it. And then they said, good job, we're taking it back, and we had no recourse. But that's been addressed in the new contract and in the new thing they do. If they do take it back, in my opinion, and I express this to Mr. Berry, is that they would be taking it back. They will give us the fair market value of the renovations that we have restored. And if they're, in my opinion again, if they're going to take it back, it has to be for a reason, which would probably be more trains or more freight trains or whatever coming in here. I don't feel that they would just take it back because it looks nice. They're going to, they'll get after that. And so it's a win-win, as far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win for the city of Raton. We have the, it's one of the last few Santa Fe railroad depots on the entire rail line. And I'm a little bit concerned about the new legislation. They want to grab back every cent they can this next legislative session. I would tell my fellow commissioners and the city manager that I would like to see us go forward on this as rapidly as possible. They have all been addressed in the new contract and in the lease. I would like to see us get after this. They did, when we met with them, Scott, and they did tell us that, and the one supervisor and I talked, and he said they were talking about building the communications, building on the other side of the tracks in the near future. That would be fine, and then that would, that entire thing, they would get out of the south wing at that point also. And that would be a very good purchase, I mean acquisition for the city.
So if they build, they build on the other side?
On the other side of the track.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe this is an asset to the city of Raton. So I will move that we accept the conveyance contract between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding railroad depot premises.
One more question before we go there. Could they give any indication as, we've walked through this, and there's quite a bit of stuff still in these other little offices? They give any indication how soon it would be before they could get some of that out?
You know, I think the only thing that has any timeframe is the telecommunications room. But now, the additional information would be, we vote on this tonight. There still is a process in place. And one thing that has to happen is Amtrak, of course, has to agree to this. This is designated as an interstate rail depot. And I have no doubt that Amtrak will approve that. That's, this is a good thing for Amtrak. But they are a party to this as well. And you see in the documents there that there will need to be several documents executed by Amtrak. And even though I'm sure that they would be happy about this and be good partners to us in this, that's going to take a little bit of a process. So I think there is a timeframe in going forward with closing on these documents. So I think as far as them moving any materials, equipment, or whatever they have there, that's probably not a large timeframe, but I think we are looking at several months probably before we really get everything executed here.
Jim, I'm looking at this drawing. They're going to give us back to this red line?
Yes, that's correct.
So they'll remove these offices and, or maybe we will, and this existing wall.
You're accepting it as is, and so they'll take their equipment or materials out of there. But any of the building modifications, including removal of partitions, that will be something left to undertake. And even to remove a rather recent partition, we would need to consult with the SHIP-O.
Right. Can we somehow, in our negotiations, include that Amtrak will sell the tickets within the depot and get rid of that Morgan building?
I would certainly communicate that to Amtrak and ask them to do it. And I would think that they would be happy to do that. But again, that might be a little way, a little time down the road after we've gone through some renovation. Now, I don't believe that we have the money to really renovate the interior of the building or the time on the current fund. So I think that we're looking at another funding option. And what was mentioned by federal highway administration, and the federal highway is very supportive of this action by the city and the renovation of the building, because the only way this building is going to get renovated is if the city jumps into it, takes an interest in it. And the city really is the only party that could do this. You know, a not-for-profit can't do this, and there really is not another party that could. But while everybody is favorable to doing that, they had mentioned that this may be a good tiger grant application. And that's probably two years down the road before we get something in the pipeline and we hear anything on it. And I think that comes after we've consulted with SHIP-O, after we have a PER prepared on that. We've got a bit of work to do before we get to that point. So I would say all of that is probably a couple of years off, you know, at best. So maybe one or two more seasons with the temporary building. But I think it would be everybody's goal to remove that. It really degrades the historic character of all of the buildings in that area.
And previous conveyance, they were going to have us responsible for all the utilities, and that's been worked out in the new lease, which was quite expensive, electricity and water.
Correct.
With that being said, I would second Commissioner Schuster's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the conveyance contract by and between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding railroad depot premises. Before we, well, we can go ahead and do this. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Scottis?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes, motion passes. Before we go on, I'd like to see you prepare, you or Michael Ann or someone, prepare some kind of a budget with the existing money left from the multimodal to include this geothermal cooling/heating system that they're requiring us to put in, and then whatever else we can get done on the outside to get that money spent.
I will do that, Mayor and Commissioner, and we'll talk about the closeout of the multimodal and under the city manager's report. But we're in the closeout now. You know, we will do the final financial cost analysis of that, and we'll have that prepared for the commission. I think we should have that before the next commission meeting. So I would plan on coming back to you and reporting the dollars that are there.
Right, well, we have to do this unit, that's part of the contract that we just passed. And then we can see how much money we have left for parking lot or the portal or whatever we're going to do on the outside to keep this thing moving and to use up the rest of the grant money. Okay, our next item of business is deliberate an act on approval of premises lease agreement by and between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding railroad depot premises. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the premises lease agreement goes hand in hand with the conveyance agreement. This would be the document that details that we would make those areas available to BNSF for their use in the signal department and the telecommunications department. And it also states that they would share in the cost of the utilities.
Is this accurate, this 2,480 square feet?
I believe it is, Mayor.
Okay, on what we understand it to be.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion for the approval of the premises lease agreement by and between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding the railroad depot premises.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the premises lease agreement by and between BNSF Railroad Company and the city of Raton regarding railroad depot premises. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Scottis?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes, motion passes. Our next item of business is a report on utility projects. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, there are, I have asked the general managers of both utilities, Raton Water Works and Raton Public Service, if they could update the commission and the public on the status of a number of projects. And I think it's timely because we're at a point with both utilities that they're working on projects that are very important to Raton and to the community. And we're at a point in, and all of those projects that they're going to report to you on have been planned and sequenced over some period of time. But we're at a point where it's timely, I think, to report to the public on the status of some of those projects. And I just want the commission and the public to get a sense that these are fairly critical projects to Raton, and progress is being made. And the utilities, of course, are a very good partner to me and to the commission here. And to really let you know, and I know we have our commission liaisons to those boards. You hear about these projects in the board meeting. But this will allow all of us to get a sense of where we're at on some of these projects. So I'd like to probably start with Raton Water Works. Mr. Campbell, general manager of Raton Water Works, is here to tell you about a couple of things that he's been working on.
Mayor, Commissioners, I've got three projects that I've got some information on to present. As you can see, this is our watershed as of July. Well, actually, that would be five years, one month, and one day since the track fire. The Seagerstrom project, creek project that we'll be discussing here was river bend engineering with Chris Phillips was done using watershed protection funds from the Mexico Environment Department. I guess what we actually did in this project is to give you an idea of, this is where we're at currently. Everybody remembers that's where we started. Five years ago, this was actually Lake Dorothy and what ran into after the first event in July of 2011. This is Foxtrot Pond just north of Seagerstrom Creek, and what it caught in a similar event in July of 2011. And what we were trying to solve is this headcut, which is what has happened since the track fire as our flows increased running down the Seagerstrom Creek. As you can see right there, even with the greenup we've had, that's the amount of sediment that was moving into Lake Malloya as that headcut continued up the Seagerstrom drainage. This is actually above Foxtrot, and a headcut that was existing that has just gotten worse since the track fire. And then, starting last year with river stewardship funds, the project began of actually, as we started working Seagerstrom Creek in there, which actually did require approval because this is endangered New Mexico jumping mouse habitat. So all this work you're seeing here was done in November inside the riparian areas because that is when the mouse is in hibernation. As you can see, as they're working through the area, we actually use a lot of natural rock in there, some of the actually burnt stumps that were removed. And your enclosures are some of the plantings we put in there, which primarily consisted of cottonwood trees, transplanted willows, and a bunch of riparian plants and some sedges along the areas to try to create a complete different hydraulic profile to stop the head cutting. As you can see there with the rocks that go in place, here's another one as you go down in one of the crossings where we put in a low-water crossing. As you can see, both banks are lined with large boulders to try to contain the Seagerstrom in there. The armor, the bottom of the creek was armored with rock to try to stop that head cutting. And this project will actually be wrapped up primarily this year and then probably within the next thirty days. As you can see, there's some of the finished product as we turn around and look at the area we've got. It'll actually be seeded and mulched as we back out of that area. This will probably be our last project in the watershed that we're actually going to do. We'll come back. We may have a little funds that'll carry over. We're ninety percent complete, possibly a little bit of seed and mulch next year on any areas that didn't take through the winter time, but we're actually backing completely out of that area. This project was done to control erosion and actually was to do creek bank stabilization and to recreate endangered meadow jumping mouse habitat, which was actually native to Sugar Tree Canyon. And this will actually have them move back up canyon into the watershed. A hundred and fifty thousand of this funding was the river stewardship funds approved by the governor and the New Mexico Environment Department. The rest of the funds were a hundred thousand, which was a combination of city of Raton's one cent gross receipts tax and some water trust board funds that we had actually done some work inside the watershed. The second project I'll be talking about, there's the final picture that they're actually backing out of right now. As you can see, that was a couple of weeks ago, is Lake Dorothy spillway in Colorado. You can actually see it's the concrete. This is actually a 1937 service spillway. The original structure and concrete is what's still up there. And this project was actually on Raton Water Works' list to be done in 2010, 2011 with K S Berry Engineering at that time. Now, we're actually in the middle of this project with engineering analytics, our local engineer. And this got tabled after the track fire. It was a project that we planned on doing rehabilitation of this will be, just like in New Mexico, it's with the dam safety bureau. In Colorado, it's done in conjunction with what is called the Colorado Division of Water Resources. The dam safety bureau also there. This project is about twenty-five percent complete. As you can see, this is prior to it where we were really in bad shape. That's actually the head wall coming out of the jump box, as you can see, from 1937. And now, a lot of water has flowed over that wall to put it into that condition as it's deteriorated. They've started last week. As you see, the rebars put in the bottom of that jump box, it's where they began their work. Actually brought in a pumper Wednesday of last week. That bottom floor was poured. It'll be continuing to work on that. There'll be a concrete pour tomorrow and Thursday. Their goal and their timeline is this has to be through in December. They're really hitting it hard because, as you know, up there, we're not going to be pouring concrete once we get into the late November range because you won't get there anymore provided we get the snowfall we need. As you can see there, they're actually pouring the floor as it goes across there and continuing to work on that area. This project has actually got Karen Sterns and Tyler Davis doing the inspection, both out of our local office here. We'll be closely monitoring this, taking a bunch of pictures of it. We have weekly construction meetings on it, and we'll turn around. And by the time we're through, it'll be rehabilitation of the service spillway, rehabilitation of the energy dissipator and the spillway chute. And actually, we'll be doing some crack ceiling repairing on the side walls. And on the east wall, it will include completely replacing that wall that on the first picture had all those spalls. had all those spalls. We have actually worked closely with the dam safety bureau in Colorado and have done some change orders recently approved at the last water board meeting that has actually lowered the project cost on this $100,000 with not having to pour an independent wall into port in conjunction with an existing wall, which was approved by the Colorado Dam Safety Bureau. The last project I was just going to discuss that I don't have any pictures on is to bring up to date. We are still moving forward with our filter plant project. And at this point, the preliminary engineering report has been approved and actually received some praise of being, you know, quite informative of what our goals are by the USDA Rural Utility Service Office in Albuquerque. And from there, we'll go up to Washington for final approval and we'll continue to monitor that situation. It was a lengthy application process, this has gone on for quite a while, there's been several update meetings with the water board. And actually, engineering analytics has put a lot of effort into getting this document in, but we did say it was, they were quite positive about our application. From there, we'll go forward and see the funding side, the, call it bad timing, the only issue with federal funding will be the presidential election. I've actually had that discussion with them as to whether that delays it any. We'll actually monitor that, it is being sent forward and I'll, we'll continue to monitor that closely because we really would like this to be a 2017 project that we start. And at that point, I'd take any questions.
I just was wondering what the condition of Lake Dorothy is?
Lake Dorothy is about 78 acre feet, which means we've lost, it's really hard to know. We actually did the bathymetric study on it post-track fire. We'd always estimated it was 100 to 125 before. Its original 1907 capacity was 200. It hasn't, due to sediment, been there, but a large amount of it was fire debris. It doesn't have near the depth it used to have, but it does still serve to keep that sediment out of Lake Malloya. And it also is fully stocked and fish, you know, they're quite, quite popular with Colorado fishermen up there that, that actually spend a lot of time up there. Part of that is from the, from the Colorado Division of Wildlife, it's, and active areas also as far as hunting. Post-track fire, the elk hunting in Colorado is excellent up there, that's actually become quite a popular area as elk have moved further south because absent the trees, we have a lot more grasslands than we used to have. But it will still continue to serve as a buffer for Lake Malloya and actually as a recreational use. More than anything else, though, any of these advantages we have on any events that happen that serve to try to control the sediment and keep them out of Lake Malloya is a plus to the city. Seagerstrom is the one issue, that's what we've always battled, is because it doesn't have that option. Even as you go up the Chicarica, there is a small sediment pond that, that we monitor and have done the spillway, put some rock on it to try to maintain that sediment control on that side. But we have lost some capacity in that, but honestly, with the jumping mouse issues and everything else, trying to ever even think about a dredging project there would be very difficult. Especially because both sides of the state line are endangered habitat for the meadows jumping mouse.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
And Seagerstrom, you indicated that's the last water board meeting, the two ponds that are up there with the wild, wildlife are on them and the cattails are growing and we've been up to look at that, but they have cattails actually growing in and ducks and geese hanging on them.
I would actually say the goal we've got and that we would, we've worked with River Bend Engineering on is that all seven sediment ponds now have become wetland areas. You have ducks, you've got riparian plants all around it, cattails, and in all those cases, they would stay in place. And all of those, even on the ephemeral channel, actually help to control sediment. As you can see, even post-track fire, they caught a lot of sediment, but we still have capacity. So as we recover, even on large rain events, they'll have, they'll be a plus to us. And the Colorado side, fishing game has been quite pleased with what you've got up there because anything like that, even on a small scale, is actually also helps wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, Mayor and Commissioner, we have Mr. Walton from Raton Public Service Company, and I thank you here to report on some great progress on the generation project. And that's, that's been several years in the development and so I think we were at a point where glad to talk about the progress on the project.
Mayor Mance, Commissioners, City Manager Scott Berry. I would first like to thank City Manager Scott Berry for including RPS in tonight's meeting and allowing RPS to give a short, brief, and update on our generation project, the Jimbacher, which we are currently calling unit number six. RPS is pleased to report the Jimbacher unit arrived on September 29th and is now in place within the building, enclosed and secure. KC, our contractor, has diligently been working on running conduit and completing wire terminations and piping connections to the Jimbacher. RPS board has initiated and approved task order number five and number six with Zachary Engineering. These task orders will complete and update the RPS side of the generation system from the unit six building to the RPS plant located on 940 South Second Street, the coal plant. Task order number five completes the engineering and support effort through final acceptance and testing of the switchgear. The cost is not to exceed $41,000. Task order number six completes the detailed design engineering effort for a 2,000 kilowatt load bank and control integration system. The load bank essentially gives RPS the ability to bring on any circuit in any order we wish. This cost is not to exceed $56,000. With the approval of the task order number five and number six, we were able to pass the design requirements onto KC, which they were able to produce change order number six for the construction and procurement and testing and commissioning of the switchgear and the load bank. This will, this will all be done during the testing and commissioning of the Jimbacher. Total cost and change order number six was 464,910. Commissioning is taking place mid-March and total completion is expected April 28th of 2017. Also, RPS is also being in contact, has been in contact with Beck Mayberry with Twin Eagle working on arrangement for RPS to operate the Jimbacher. Our hope is that we will be allowed to operate at 100%, which will allow Twin Eagle to sell the power we don't purchase on the spot market, therefore allowing RPS and Twin Eagle the ability to generate revenue. Due to gas having the lowest cost per CCF in years, the timing couldn't be better. We should have our response from Twin Eagle this week. And when I get that information, I will report to each one of you by email. I'll ask Dan Campbell for assistance now. We have a few pictures that we'd like to show. This is the crane extending out as they were preparing the wires and they were setting the blocks. It extended out full length and it was pretty interesting to watch that, it got way up in the air there. Next picture. This is when they pulled the truck into site, they got up right next to the crane after setting the crane, and they were getting ready to take the lift off the top of the This is the engine actually going into the building after they hooked onto it. They started this process about nine o'clock in the morning and this, this picture here is about eight o'clock in the evening. It was a very, very long process. The guys were very safe in what they did and they took it very seriously. This is at 9:30, right before they shut down for the night, the guys were really exhausted. This is really an inch by inch process and it was pretty amazing to watch. But you can see the crane still attached at the, at the back end there and that forklift is pushing that unit into place. They set that thing on rollers, which set on steel plates, and pretty impressive. This is the next morning, this is the actual generator going into the building after they set the engine in place. Here's the forklift, sorry about that. The forklift actually moving up underneath that where the crane had taken its cables off is supporting that, that generation unit right there. And you can see how flat those tires are crunching down there. Pretty heavy unit. This is the actual engine in place, getting ready to receive the, the generator unit. This is Jeff Schooner, the head engineer there that was setting the, the unit for us. He's actually taking the bolts out of the flywo. That's Jeff on the ground there preparing for the connection, and this is the generator coming into place. You can see the roller skates beneath that unit there sliding on those steel plates. And it was amazing to watch that that forklift would push it, but once it got into the building there, this was all done by manpower. And it was amazing, they would get those big boys on the back end of that thing, there was about four of them, and they would push that thing and it would scoot up about an inch and a half at a time. So quite a process. With that, I'll accept any questions that you might have.
What did, what was the date you gave for startup or commissioning?
It would have been, let's see, March. Let's see, commissioning is mid-March, total completion is expected April 28th.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. They're in the process right now, they'll be pouring the pad for the load bank here probably in a couple of weeks. Everything's been on order and we finally got the final plans for them to go ahead and start off.
And this unit's going to give us cold start abilities, capabilities?
That is correct, yes. Yes. That is, that's one of the goals we got to meet. And these, these gentlemen, they promised me they're not leaving until we're, we've accepted it and we're satisfied with everything that we've wanted on our contract. So we're going to, we're going to time here, they're going to be here.
Good to hear.
I have no questions.
Well, Mayor and Commissioner, I think several important projects for the community of Raton, and we wanted to bring you up to date on where we were on those.
Good job, both of you. My next item of business is the city manager's report.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would report to, or remind the commission that the, there will be a grand opening of the educational center by the Raton Education Foundation, also known as the Center for Sustainable Communities. And a lot of activities going on there, a lot of hard work by the staff, specifically John Davidson is out in front, partnering with a number of, of educational agencies, but specifically Santa Fe Community College. So this grand opening will be held October 14th and the grand opening will run between the hours of one and five, and then there will be a reception from 5:00 to 7:30. And so I think some of the partners like Santa Fe Community College will be present, DOS Aviation will be in town. And we encourage everyone, including the public, to come by the educational center and see the facility and listen to some of the plans there. That's located at First Street and Park Avenue. The city department heads and some of the supervisory personnel have been participating in management training that is provided by Quality New Mexico. We did have a, a second training here during the week. We had Rita Shiplett from Quality New Mexico was up and she's providing leadership tools for our excellence journey. And what we talked about here recently was our, discussing our mission, vision, and values. And all of the department heads have been working on their mission statements. We have a ways to go on this management training. Will result in the development of strategic plans and goals. And those goals are really based on the, the goals that were established by the commission about 18 months ago where we got together and talked about what the community goals would be. That's something that we have followed up on and we will establish our mission based on those, so that work is going on. On the project update, we had noted in previous meeting that we have accomplished a couple of our goals in the solid waste department. And a couple of years ago, we really, the goal, overall goal was to modernize the, from top to bottom, that solid waste department. We talked about the bear proof dumpsters and, and the reclamation work going on at the landfill. In that time, we have received our closure, post-closure care plan approval and conditions from the New Mexico Environment Department Solid Waste Bureau for the 30-year post-closure care period. So during that 30-year period, we would maintain the property and specifically what you would see there is erosion until vegetation is fully established, which takes some years. We will have erosion from time to time and be responsible for maintaining that. We will monitor groundwater and we will monitor for methane gas during that time. So that 30-year period has started. We did establish a temporary seed cover at the landfill. We would go back in the spring and add a permanent seed cover and mulch, and we would do that to the borrow areas as well. So that's a, that's a rather large task that's coming up. We talked about the progress on multimodal at the last meeting and I did report that the contractor had made good efforts in advancing the project. And I'm happy to report that now the project is complete. So the project, the contractor has finished his work, he has demobilized from the project. And the next remaining task there would be closeout documentation. So final change orders and, and request for payment from the contractor, there'll probably be a couple of them. We'll go through that process over the next couple of weeks and we'll bring back the final totals to the commission. But the project is done. I was very happy with the, with the construction and we've talked about a ribbon cutting ceremony potentially for that. And I would take the direction of the commission if you would like to, to have a ceremony. It's, it's been a project that's been out there for a lot of years, a lot of time developing, a lot of steps to get to this point. I think it looks well. And the intent was that a lot of people get on and off the train in Raton at that location. And, and prior to this project, the facilities were not very nice for travelers coming into our town. So we're trying to create a nice environment for travelers and the depot again would be to meet that goal. The travelers can get what they need, information, a cup of coffee, whatever it is they need, and have a favorable impression of our community as well. So we'll follow up on that. If you would think about a ribbon cutting ceremony, I would just point out that we are getting out of weather, the fall weather is pretty nice right now. I don't know how much of that we have left, so as far as doing this in nice weather, we're probably fairly limited. So we could do that in the, you know, the next several weeks or a month, if you care to do that. We could also do it next spring when everything rains up again. But I will take any suggestions that the commission might have on that. And while you're thinking about it, I'll go down the list a little more. We did talk about legislative capital outlay funds and potentially doing some street improvements during 2016. And Jason Phillips has kept in contact with DOT as far as the availability of those funds. They're just not going to be available. And as you know, nothing happened awaiting the outcome of the special session with the legislature. And since that time, it does not appear that we're going to get the approval in a timely manner to proceed this year. So essentially, we're going to make the call that that project will have to go back into warm weather again next year, likely about first June of 2017. That was $150,000 that we had talked about doing chip seal surfacing on various residential streets. A couple of projects at the airport, we had issued a notice to proceed for two projects. One is the overwing fuel tank replacement project, and the second one is the access road gate at the airport. So we have issued those, notice to proceed and we would anticipate that the sliding gate will be installed by November 1st or in early November. The fuel tank will take some time to get the equipment in, so that'll be later in the year. Myself and the utilities did meet with the consultant Myself and the utilities did meet with the consulting engineer for the Beehive Assisted Living Development Project that's located close to the ARF building. Raton Water Works has completed some utility line relocation as a part of that project. There still is some other utilities that need to be relocated. The timing on construction of that project is, is unclear right now, but likely that'll get caught up in cold weather as well and I would, I would guess we'll see that next During the week, I did receive a certificate of survey for a land division. We did execute it here after consultation with the staff. It was recorded and that is for division of land where the Kentucky Fried Chicken building is located. So, that, that division of land was recorded. It basically split the Kentucky Fried Chicken building from other buildings on that tract, created two tracts. There was an announcement that a Domino's Pizza restaurant would be going in there and there has been work on the building commencing today, I believe. So, pretty rapid movement on that project. And lastly, Mayor and Commissioner, I would report that I will meet with a group that is called Strike on October seventeenth, evening of October seventeenth, and they are a group of volunteers that are asking what can we do to volunteer to make Raton a better community? So, we're going to get together on that evening with that group and discuss what the needs are and what their interest is as far as volunteering. So, a very good thing. We always appreciate volunteers and people that are interested in improving the community and I'll report back to you on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Have we received any news about whether or not the Great Blocks grant, whether we're going, that's going to proceed or if it's being cut?
Mayor, there are a number of funding opportunities that primarily Jason Phillips from our staff and Brenda Ferry from Main Street, as well as other city staff and other people with Raton Main Street have responded to, put in requests for funding, pursued information on. We do not have any, anything back in the way of funding developing at this point. We have some very positive feedback from various places that we have submitted applications and what's favorable to us is we have ready to go to construction plans and specifications on that. And that is a very positive thing when you're out looking for funding. People like getting behind a project that involves a historic district rejuvenation project, redevelopment, and the fact that you've done your due diligence, gone through a lot of the processes, and you're ready to request bids. So, we have some optimism about that. Some of those avenues involve state funding and so the, the bad side of this is state funding, of course, is all caught up in the special session. It's not going to get better before the regular session. Some of those funding sources may just not be funded by the legislature currently, but we have got very positive feedback from all of the agencies that we have talked to and there is, there continues to be a lot of work in looking for funding for the Great Blocks project.
Okay, good. Is there any other business to come before this body? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.